Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to start the session on time so we could end it promptly. This is, this afternoon, especially after a full lunch and a glass of wine, you are doing remarkable jobs, staying awake and paying attention. I hope during the coffee break you had a chance to stretch and get some fresh air. Well, in this session, there are two of us. I am, my name is Chan Gook. I'm currently professor at the Chungnam National University, and I'll be the moderator slash discussion whatever. And we have the main presenter, Professor Frank Warnock. He is currently a professor of Darden Business School, University of Virginia. You notice that there are just two of us that, it says something about the presenter, that he can carry the weight, make the case, and, you know, make good presentations so we don't need a lot more people than just one main presenter. And this is his first visit to Korea, so some of you are not familiar with him. He's been very active in terms of research. So those of you who are in the field, reading current papers, should have seen his name quite often. His short Vita introduction is on page 67 of the booklet, so you could get the detailed information about what he's been doing and what he is doing. Simply put, he's a very widely traveled, experienced. He, both in private sector, public sector, he was in, he did, spent short time in Wall Street, then also some time in the central bank system of the U.S., the Federal Reserve Board. And not only that, he currently holds lots of research associate positions, advisor positions at NBL in the U.S., Council of Foreign Relations, Federal Reserve Bank of Dallas. Those are all in the U.S., also in Dublin, Ireland, IMF, European Central Bank, Hong Kong Monetary Authority, and also Bank of International Settlement. He has some relationship. So, as you can see, he's a very active researcher with very illustrious private and public sector experience, with active research, you know, underway. So it's a great opportunity to hear him explain the situation. So this session, we're going to focus on China's currency, and the title is China's Currency Policy and Global Imbalances. After listening to Professor Mundell's presentation in the previous session, it's like this title and this angle, it's like we are looking at T-shirts you can easily find at some tourist places or schools where the world map is drawn, where the, at the center is that, that city or that school, and it's, you know, the rest of the universe is basically insignificant around that particular attraction. So it's, what's going on now and where we are, I guess Chinese yuan is almost interest, so we have separate session talking about it. And so, okay, without further ado, let me introduce Professor Frank, and let's give him a warm hand for his presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Chan Gook, for that very warm introduction, and thank you to the organizers for inviting me. I'm very happy to be here and honored to be here in Korea. The title of my talk today, title of the session is China Currency Policy and Global Imbalance. I inserted into that, "and U.S." I'm going to talk about U.S. policy as well. And the basic idea is that I will, I will look at things from a China's perspective, but also from the U.S. perspective, and then the rest of the world's perspective. And the rest of the world, you can think of from a Korean perspective, or from the perspective of many of the smaller, very open economies in the world. So the plan is, I will start with some obvious facts. I think it's useful to tell this story through pictures, so I'll start with a series of pictures, as what I view as some obvious facts in the background here. Then I'll look at things from the U.S. perspective briefly, then from China's perspective, and then the view from the rest of the world. And then towards the end of the talk, I'll talk about a way forward, how I think the policies can evolve in a constructive way, which is in contrast to some of the conversations that have been had over the past year. And then I'll close with a thought on some of the promises or vows that came out of the G20 Finance Ministers' Meeting this past weekend. So obvious fact number one, this is, this picture is kind of at a heart, at the heart of some of the tension, in economic policy terms at least, some of the tension between China and the U.S. China has a very, very large current account surplus, that's the red line, that's above zero, so it's a current account surplus mostly because of a very large trade surplus. And the U.S. has a, has an enormous trade deficit, enormous current account deficit. And this, this one picture is kind of, as I said, is at the heart of some of the tension between China and the U.S. in terms of their economic policies. At last weekend's Finance Ministers' Meeting, they, or just before it, U.S. Treasury Secretary Timothy Geithner suggested a 4% rule, that countries should keep these, these current account balances at less than 4%. If you, if you look at this same picture in terms of percent of GDP, which is what Secretary Geithner was getting at, and this one goes back further, this graph goes back to 1980. At times, the U.S. current account deficit has been less than 4% of GDP, but, but often it's, it's been greater. So this 4% number that Geithner threw out there is actually, is actually pretty meaningful. It's not some enormous number, it's some, some number around which the U.S. current account deficit has fluctuated in past years. And the Chinese current account surplus is much greater than 4% of GDP, it's about 6% of GDP. These imbalances have been narrowing through the global financial crisis, so started to narrow when the, when the U.S. economy started to slow before the crisis, and then with the crisis, these imbalances narrowed even more, but they're still large. And again, this is kind of, this, this picture is at the heart of some of the, some of the tensions. Obvious fact number two is that China manages the value of its currency vis-à-vis the U.S. dollar. The U.S. government has not been willing to put the brand of currency manipulator on, on China, but whether you use the word manipulate or manage, they clearly manage the value of their currency, and you can see this through the left panel on this slide, just shows their accumulation of reserves and the enormous increase in reserves over the past decade. They, they're buying these reserves for a number of reasons, but one of the, one of the dominant reasons is to keep the value of the, of the U.S. currency high so that, so that U.S. households can buy Chinese goods. That's one of the reasons they're doing it. The, the right panel shows the trajectory of the Chinese exchange rate against the dollar over the past two decades, and after a large depreciation, devaluation in the early 90s, it was very, very steady for 10-plus years, then appreciated a little bit '05 to '07, and then was very steady through the crisis. This is clearly a managed exchange rate, that's just an obvious fact. That's not a statement about whether this is good or bad, it's just, this currency is, is managed. Obvious fact number three, why is the U.S., so back to fact number two, this has been going on for some time, the managing of the currency, the massive reserve accumulations on China's behalf has been going on for a long time. Why is the U.S. so excited about it now? Obvious fact number three is that the, the U.S. economic situation is less than encouraging, it's very, it's actually very depressing. This is a picture going back to 1995 of the un- and underemployed, or employment rate. So not just the unemployment rate, but also adding in those people who have left the U.S. workforce because they're discouraged. They've looked for jobs, they can't find jobs. If you're not looking for a job, you're not counted in the unemployment rate. To, to be counted in that number, you have to be looking for a job. There are many, many people who have given up looking for jobs. This particular graph adds those people in as well, and so this is kind of the, the unemployment rate plus discouraged workers, in a sense. That has really risen very sharply with this, with the, with the recent recession and the continued slow growth. It's more than double, it's now at 17%, it's more than double what it had been in past decades. So this is, this is the pain that is felt on the streets in, in America, and this is the pain when you see Tea Party protests and things like that in America. This is, this is the pain that, that people are feeling, and when they feel this pain, they tell the politicians, right? And, and then the politicians then say, "Well, what can we do?" And they look around, and one thing that they look around at is China manages its currency, right? So doesn't matter as much in good times in the U.S., but in bad times, it certainly, it certainly does. Obvious fact number four, both Chairman Greenspan mentioned this, and Professor Mundell mentioned this, the, we have a fiscal paralysis in the U.S. right now. There's, it's impossible, it seems to be impossible for, to have expansionary fiscal policy at this time, so you have a slow economy, a sluggish economy, but the fiscal policy is, is paralyzed. It's, it seems to be impossible for the president and Congress to get together and agree on what a, what a fiscal package would look like. And so if that's the case, if you have a sluggish economy and you're not going to get any boost from fiscal policy, it falls to the monetary policy to pick up the slack. And the Fed has, has done this, and they've, they've signaled that, they've indicated that they're willing to expand even more vigorously going, going forward. So that's, that's fact number four. I, this is, this is the monetary base, this is the asset side of the Fed's balance sheet, this is what, what determines, if you multiply this by the money multiplier, which Professor Mundell mentioned, you get to the money supply. So this is, this is the most direct way that the Fed can influence the amount of money in circulation in the U.S. economy. And I labeled a couple other episodes in this picture, just so you get a sense of the magnitude of what they've done recently. The first one I labeled was Year 2000. You see, it's a little bump, and that's when everybody was excited that when the clock, when we turned to Year 2000, none of the clocks were going to work anymore, and the financial system was going to have difficulties. The Fed provided excess liquidity to the system at that point, and you can see, it's this little bump, very tiny bump. And then with 9/11, again, so a massive, massive shock, and the Fed again stepped in and added liquidity, but it shows up in this graph as a tiny, the tiniest of bumps. And then you, then the last thing I labeled is the global financial crisis, and they've rewritten the rulebook in terms of increasing the monetary base. They more than doubled it in the matter of weeks and months. And so this is, this is unprecedented. When, when Chairman Greenspan mentioned this is an unprecedented financial crisis, the response of the Federal Reserve has been unprecedented as well. So that's, that's the fact, obvious fact number four, with fiscal paralysis, and you still have a sluggish economy, it falls to the Federal Reserve to, to try to spur growth. Obvious fact number five, from a rest of the world perspective, this is harder to read because it's, the paper that's behind this, the article that's behind this is being written as I, as I speak, basically. And so it's not all that well-developed, but what this shows is, going back over three decades of time, the percent of countries, the share of countries in the world that on the left, that are experiencing a sudden surge of capital inflows, that is abnormally high international capital flows coming into the, their economy, that's on the left. On the right is a percentage of countries experiencing a sudden stop in capital flows, so abnormal, abnormally low amount of capital inflows into the economy, when, when foreign capital just pulls out of the economy. What, what we see in these graphs is, if you just focus on the 2005 to 2010 period, what we had in 2004 to 2007 was a very abnormal or elevated number of countries around the world that were, that were attracting enormous inflows, enormous amount of money from, from abroad, and that episode ended with sudden stops everywhere. So investors retrenched, and from the Korean perspective, or from other countries' perspective, all of a sudden, this capital was just flowing out of the country. Foreigners who had invested in these countries were pulling out, and that's, that's, that's what we've seen. So if, one way, from an international capital flows perspective, one way to characterize the last five years was abnormally high flows, international flows '04 to '07, that then morphed into a sudden stop, or just a cessation of these capital flows, they just, the foreign investors pulled back. What, what we're seeing more recently, and I'll touch on this later, is a lot of these flows are going back to emerging markets again. So my guess is, when I update this graph, we are seeing a lot of surge of capital flows, a lot of countries experiencing that these days. So those are the, those are just some facts to keep in mind as we, as we think about this issue. Next, I'll touch on, just from a U.S. perspective. So if I'm just sitting in the U.S., say I'm a, a U.S. congressman, I understand some economics, but my, my job really is to, is to serve my constituents. From that perspective, what you would say is China is, is managing its currency, it's trying to keep its currency from appreciating, and it's doing so precisely to enable its export sector to flourish. Chairman Greenspan this morning mentioned, for stability in China, you need massive employment growth, and, and this is one way that China is enabling that, that massive employment growth by keeping its currency depreciated, so its, its goods are cheaper for the rest of the world. So it's doing so to enable its export sector to flourish, so it can get this massive employment that it needs, and it's doing this at the expense of other countries. Currencies are a zero-sum game. If I keep my currency abnormally low, that means some other currency is, is being kept abnormally high. And China, by doing so, is fostering global imbalances, it helped, it helped keep U.S. borrowing rates low, so when you, when Chairman Greenspan talked about the long-term interest rates being too low in the U.S. in the '04-'05 period, in part, that's because of the Chinese buying of U.S. Treasury bonds, and by doing so, it stoked the bubble that then burst into the global financial crisis. That would be one perspective from the U.S. If you switch this around and think about it from the, from the Chinese perspective, China would say, "The U.S. is managing its currency to keep it from appreciating." It's not doing it as overtly as we are, but the U.S. mix of paralyzed fiscal policy and extraordinarily loose monetary policy is going to naturally depreciate the dollar. China has a explicit exchange rate policy, but it can argue that the U.S. has an implicit exchange rate policy that is trying to do the same thing, it's trying to keep the dollar, keep the dollar low. Why would, why does China think that the U.S. is doing this? It's doing so precisely to enable economic growth, and some of this economic growth is going to come at the expense of other countries. So if you keep your, keep your currency low, you sell more to the rest of the world, and it's harder for the rest of the world to, to sell to you. So you can, you can, you can turn around the U.S. argument, view it from a different perspective, and make the point that the U.S., from the, from China's perspective, the U.S. is managing the value of the dollar as well. And when it does so, it's fostering global imbalances, it's, it's forcing a massive flow of funds to the rest of the world, it's potentially stoking the, the next round of bubbles that will eventually burst. So we have two different perspectives. Then if you look at this from the rest of the world, and you could think of this from the, from Korea's perspective, or from Brazil's perspective, or many other countries, the rest of the world might say, "China and the U.S. are both actively trying to depreciate their currencies." They're both trying to keep their currencies down, and in doing so, they're prompting a massive wave of funds to, this wave of funds that is searching the world for higher yields. So interest rates in the U.S. are 0%, 1%, in part because of, of these policies. And so you see funds, if you talk to investment banks or private banks, they're, they're searching the world for higher yield, they want to, they want to find higher yield, and a lot of that funds will go to Brazil, will go to Korea, and countries like that. The rest of the world might say, "We like the attention, but too much of a good thing has led to problems in the past." Clearly, when you have a wave of funds coming into the, into the financial system, some bad decisions are made. This is the idea of too much money chasing too few really worthy projects, and so some bad decisions will be made, and it's, one could ask, might a prolonged surge in these capital inflows morph into an abrupt sudden stop, where all of a sudden, the foreigners pull out very, very quickly? And the, and countries like Korea and Brazil might say, "Well, what are we to do? Are we, should we enact capital controls? Should we start some massive reserve accumulation to try to keep our currency down as well? Or should we just let the exchange rates appreciate sharply?" If they stand back and do, do nothing, with the, with the flow of money coming in, the exchange rate will certainly appreciate and slow down, slow down their economies. So that's, so I've gone through some, some facts that are in the background, the U.S. perspective, the China perspective, the rest of the world perspective, and now talk briefly about a way forward. In my opinion, a way forward is that the, the U.S. and China should, should agree that, one, China's manipulating its currency overtly through its exchange rate policy, through the massive reserve accumulation and pegging, keeping its, its currency abnormally low, but at the same time, the U.S. is manipulating its currency covertly through its combination of fiscal, monetary, and, and tax policies. The combination is, is naturally keeping the dollar low, and we've seen that in recent, in recent months. The way forward is that they should, rather than being fixated on current account rules, you know, or the actual value of the exchange rate, they should agree to address the underlying forces at work. And these underlying forces, if we look at it first in China, China's really become too big of a country to continue to rely on selling to the rest of the world as its engine of growth. At some point, it's going to have to boost domestic demand, it's going to have to allow the, the households to prosper more, and not have so much of the growth being focused in the export sector. To do so, it should allow financial sector development, it should put an end to financial repression, it's a very repressed financial system, it should enable better access to finance. Households naturally save a lot in China, in part because there's no social safety net, there's no social insurance, so you have to save. If there's no safety net, you have to save, that is, that becomes your safety net, and so better developing these will allow naturally for more consumption and less, and less savings. The idea is, is address the, the, some of the underlying forces that lead the Chinese government to want to manage the exchange rate and to want to acquire these massive reserves. With financial sector development, less financial repression, more of a social safety net, again, households will naturally consume more, standard of living will increase for the, for the, for the average Chinese household compared to what it currently is. The U.S. should, in my opinion, allow for some normalization of monetary policy. Right now, the U.S. monetary policy is enormously expansionary, it's very, very loose, and Chairman, Chairman Ben Bernanke has indicated that he's willing to loosen it even more going forward, and that has really driven down the value of the dollar. Why is Bernanke doing this? Because the economy is sluggish, the Fed has a dual mandate. It has to worry about inflation, but it has to worry about economic growth and employment as well. And so when he sees it sluggish, he says, "I'm going to do something about it," and that's what he's doing. And, but so much of it is falling to monetary policy because there is fiscal paralysis in the U.S., the fiscal authorities just cannot put forward a stimulus package. So to allow a normalization of monetary policy, I would suggest that, that they, that the U.S. immediately enact a fiscal stimulus program. The problem is, as you've heard today many times, there is a debt and deficit problem in the U.S. That problem is out in the medium term though. Again, Chairman Greenspan mentioned this, it has to do with entitlements, it has to do with Medicare, Social Security, things like that, there are very difficult medium term issues that have nothing to do with a short-term stimulus package. If they were to put forward a stimulus package to help revive the economy, at the same time, they're going to have to have medium-term rules to rein in the, the very dangerous medium-term debt dynamics. The, the debt problems in the U.S. are not about the current year's deficit, it's about the deficit three to five years out, when by all forecasts, the U.S. economy is doing okay in three to five years, but it's still forecasted to have massive deficits. That's not acceptable. When the economy's doing well, it should be, the deficit should be more or less in balance. It's not going to be in the U.S. unless there's significant progress in reining in entitlements, changing Medicare, Social Security, things of that nature. They also have to rework tax and other policies to, to incentivize savings rather than consumption. Consumption's not taxed in the U.S. to, to a large extent. A consumption tax would, would go a long way to, to slow down consumption and provide more of an incentive for savings. What are the alternatives? So if, if China and the U.S. says, "Yeah, that's, that's nice, Professor Warnock, those are nice ideas, but we're not going to do it," what are the alternatives? The alternatives, well, economies, so the U.S. economy, European economy, Japanese economy, none of them are doing well, and, and they need to be inflated, and so what we'll probably see is non-coordinated, super-expansionary monetary policies in a number of different places, and, and hitting at a number of different times, so not all, not coordinated, not at the same time. And this could work, and this would be so super-aggressive monetary policy, but it will lead to massive currency volatility. So one day, you'll see the dollar spiking, or for a month, you'll see the dollar surging, and then it will plummet, and that would be the norm. When you have non-coordinated, super-aggressive monetary policies, you expect to see a lot of currency volatility. That currency volatility can also lead to trade protectionism, to punitive tariffs being put on, on imported goods, for example. Countries that are doing better, so Brazil, for example, Korea perhaps, they're, they are either going to have to import these monetary policies, which are completely inappropriate for them, so if the country's doing very well, you don't want a U.S.-style zero-interest-rate policy, but you'll either do that, or you'll face massive capital inflows and currency appreciation. So it's a, it's a very difficult situation for the countries that are doing well in the world. They either have an inappropriate monetary policy as a response, or their currencies will appreciate a lot, or, or the U.S. and China could actually do the hard work and address the underlying issues. Final slide, relative to the vows or the Final slide, uh, relative to the vows or the, or the promises that were made last weekend in the G20 Finance Ministers' Meeting, what I'm proposing is not too different in spirit, uh, but I'm not, notice, I, I never fixated on, uh, a 4% rule for the current account balance, for example, um, or, uh, or, or things like that. I don't think that numerical limits are actually all that helpful. Uh, reason, reason being numeric, numbers can be, can be gamed. Uh, we, we saw that in, in the euro, uh, area, where they had a 3% rule on deficits, but, one, countries, uh, violated that rule, but there was no repercussions. Uh, if you actually think about, so when, so if the US had a higher-than-4% current account deficit, what would it have to do? It would have to slow down its economy. Well, what if, what if it's already in recession? Do you think that the Federal Reserve is going to tighten monetary policy just because the G20 instituted this rule of a 4% current account deficit? I, I don't think so, right? So if you actually work it through, it's, it's unlikely to, to succeed. Better, I think, is to focus on the root causes of the imbalances. In China, it's financial repression, social safety net, currency management. In the US, it's policies that, that favor consumption over savings. Uh, I did some work with, with a colleague, Carolyn Freund of the, of the World Bank a while back, that looked, explicitly looked at countries that had large and persistent current account deficits. Uh, and in, in that study, uh, really, the, the thing that jumps out is countries with very low savings rates, that don't save enough, those are the ones that have the large current account, and persistent current account deficits. And so the US, uh, really ought to focus on ways of, of raising the savings, uh, the savings rate. And that's all I have for now, and, uh, I think I'll turn back.
Okay, uh, so, I, I have, I have a couple of questions and, uh, comments, and then we'll take questions from the floor. So, uh, feel free to, uh, raise your hands and, uh, ask questions. Uh, if you're not comfortable, uh, asking question in English, you can, uh, ask in Korean. Uh, a lot of you seem to be, uh, in graduate school, and, uh, you have to ask questions if you want to learn. Uh, so, in terms of, uh, last thing first, uh, this current account, uh, 4% goal that's being talked about, uh, I, um, I, I think there are additional problem, I mean, there are lots of problems, but the things that come to my mind is that to reduce current accounts upwards, what has happened is, uh, import has to increase and export has to decrease. And so, uh, things like exchange rate elasticity of imports is going to matter, right? And also income elasticity. And the numbers I've seen is that, uh, income elasticity is much greater than, uh, exchange rate elasticity, meaning, uh, if you want to reduce import, US is current account deficit country more, you know? So if you, US wants to reduce current account deficit, it has to strengthen the dollar. I, I mean, uh, I'm sorry, weaken the dollar at this, but what it said, what it means is that more effective way of reducing imports is to make people poor, right? Reduce income. There will, if your income falls, you reduce spending and the import will fall. So, so in that sense, uh, current account, perhaps, uh, one of the, um, the representative residual number that comes out as a result of interaction of many macroeconomic variables, which cannot be easily, uh, manipulated, uh, by exchange rate changes, which, uh, simple form, current proposal seems to, seems to aim. So that, that's one thing I would, I would like to, uh, add. Then, uh, I have a question. Uh, what you just described, the things that US and China have to do, uh, all, you know, good and well, you know, I, I wish the same thing, and, you know, we will live in better world. It's sort of like, uh, the first choice, uh, structural improvement that, uh, that will make everybody better. But the reality is that, uh, political pressure, short-sightedness, or, or whatever, uh, we, we have sort of, ideas are being thrown out, uh, quantitative easing, that talked about, you know, mentioned so much earlier today, QE, quantitative easing, which is, uh, in Frank's graph, the, that they'll, uh, push up the monetary base further up, the number that you saw. So that's what quantitative easing is. And, uh, FOMC meeting early November, uh, is, looks like going to implement QE2, the second round. Uh, so the reality is that we are going to be awash in dollar fund, and money, uh, Frank is expert in, in, uh, capital flow, so, uh, predictably, money will flow into Korea, Brazil, and all these places. So how about, uh, in your slide, you left it as question mark, uh, capital control, how about that? It's a, it's, it's an immediate problem, uh, things that can, the options available right now for some of these countries, including Korea. Uh, capital control might be, uh, an option. What do you think?
I think that, um, so, so you're absolutely, you're absolutely right that, uh, the, the things I propose, it, um, so economics, first statement, economics is always much, much easier than politics. Uh, we can, as an economist, we can, we can plot out a course, uh, that we think that the policymakers should follow, uh, but then politics usually gets in the way, or, or makes it much more difficult. And so some of the things that I'm, I'm proposing, uh, I fully agree, that, uh, might not, might not occur. And so then we're, we're left in a, in a second-best world, right? The first-best outcome, which would be US saves more, China saves less, uh, and then, yes, we still have imbalances, but they're not extreme. Uh, that first-best world, that might, we, we might not get to that. Then we, we're left in the second-best world. Um, once you're in a second-best world, then, uh, things like capital controls become, uh, become a reasonable option. Um, I, I think that for small, open economies like Korea, like, like Brazil, um, I can use the word, I can leave the word "small" out, let's just say, open economies, uh, facing this wave of capital inflows, um, clearly, we know how this ends, right? Uh, we, we know that when we have these waves of capital inflows, that projects that shouldn't have gotten funded will, will get funded, there'll be over-investment, overspending, and then there's always an overhang afterwards that has to work through, and, and, and the way it works through usually is through a crisis. Um, and if you foresee that path of events, uh, then maybe you would, might wanna forestall it with, with some capital controls. I don't think, the problem is, uh, if you think about the financial world, the US is roughly one-half the financial world. If, uh, if all of the investment banks and investors in the US decide that they are going to put their money in emerging markets, um, no amount of capital controls is really going to, uh, is really going to slow that down. Uh, not no amount. Obviously, if you erect a wall around your country and, and have 100% capital controls, that will slow it down. Um, but it's, um, I don't know how much it's going to work. Uh, that's, that's an issue. I mean, this is a, a pretty massive wave of funds that, uh, one would expect if, uh, China keeps its currency from appreciating and the, the US Federal Reserve initiates QE2, which they've, uh, as Chongguo mentioned, and which they, they, they certainly have indicated that they will. That's a long way of saying that, in a, in a second-best world, uh, tools that you might not normally wanna use, you do have to, you do have to consider.
Okay, uh, another question is about the, uh, China, Chinese perspective. In this slide, you mentioned that China taking position that, um, you know, sort of, uh, China's sort of being the voice of adversely affected by this, uh, capital flow, uh, you know, sort of speaking for Korea, speaking for Brazil, in the sense that, uh, you know, inflow of capital will create bubble and worse problems. But, uh, this, I, I think Chinese will appreciate the, you giving the credit, but I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if this is a realistic interpretation, and in particular, um, I'm wondering about, you know, this, uh, China raised, uh, short-term policy rate last week, unexpected. So how do we interpret this? Usually, uh, when you have open, uh, capital flow, free capital flow, higher interest rate means, you know, inflow of capital, that higher interest rate will be an inducement, and will put upward pressure on the currency, uh, among other things. So that's not the, uh, aim, I mean, that's not the, the, the goal, the, if, what Chinese government wants to see, I presume. And so is this sort of expression of self-confidence that, uh, they can do with monetary policy, uh, strictly focused on domestic economy, just as US is taking that position, all right? Flexible exchange rate, uh, textbook says you adopt it. The benefit of it is, uh, you can focus on domestic economic condition, making monetary policy. So is China so confident that, you know, you can interest rate, raise interest rate, then, you know, I mean, the normal inflow capital, uh, will take care of it, that's not going to be an issue, domestic economy number one? How, how should we read this?
Yeah, so the, the way I look at it is, it's still, um, it's still very difficult for global investors to, uh, to buy into Chinese, uh, interest rate products. Uh, and so most global investors, at least from the US perspective, um, you know, they can, they can, they can buy non-deliverable forwards on, on the currency, but, but they have a hard time buying a product that, that gets, gives them the yield. And so when you get the, the slight tightening, uh, in China, it doesn't actually attract global funds. Uh, so in that sense, and this is because of capital controls that they have, uh, so in that sense, they are free to, uh, to initiate any type of monetary policy they want to. They have a disconnect between their domestic monetary policy, uh, and the international aspect of it that you mentioned, right? So, uh, normally, when, when a country raises interest rates, it does attract a lot of money, and that does put upward pressure on their currency. Uh, and, and the flip side is too, is true as well. When the, when the Fed initiates QE2, uh, money leaves searching, searching for higher yield. China's been, it can, I don't think it has anything to do with a, a statement of their, of their power, uh, but it's just, it's a clear fact of the capital controls. So they have this, if you have the, if you have the capital controls, you have a disconnect between your domestic policy and the international aspects of it that enables them to do that. Uh, I think the reason they did it is exactly, uh, so this, this massive reserve accumulation is, is inflationary. You can try to mop up the liquidity of these actions, but the, it becomes inflationary. Um, and so, um, the, uh, I suspect why they raised, started to raise rates is to try to slow down the economy, because they probably see inflation bubbling up.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now, if you have question, uh, I'll give you opportunity to, to ask questions.
I'll ask in, in Korean. Maybe you help me to translate.
Okay, we have a very able interpreter. He or she will, uh, the good job. So if, uh, if, uh, 18 countries, that's G20 minus China and the US, sign a petition, do something about this, uh, you to go into corner of the room and solve the problem within a week, uh, will they cooperate?
No. No. Not, not within a week. Um, I actually, so this is a very good question, and I, I, I think that, uh, that is the way forward. I think that, uh, that should have been the way forward a year or two ago. So a year or two ago, uh, it's the US complaining about the massive Chinese accumulation of US Treasury bonds, uh, complaining about, uh, China not allowing the currency, their currency to appreciate, but it, but it impacts the other 18 countries greatly. Uh, and so it should be the case that, uh, that the other Asian countries complain, that India, India complains, that other emerging markets, that emerging market countries complain, uh, because they all, if they want to, uh, stay competitive with China, they have to do the same sort of thing. They have to accumulate a lot, a lot of reserves as well from, to keep their currencies from appreciating. If they don't, they'll lose competitiveness vis-à-vis China, uh, and that can be very painful. This reserve accumulation is, is inflationary. It's, it's hard to, it's hard to, to suppress the inflation that it, that it causes. Uh, and so I was of the opinion back in 2006, 2007, that more constructive than just the US complaining about these things would be if the other countries impacted would start to, uh, have a, have a united front, uh, or united view, uh, on how these policies were impacting them. And so, so I, I, I fully agree that the other 18 countries in the G20 will be impacted by what China and the US does. Um, and, uh, I started my answer by saying no, only because it'll take more than a week, that's for sure. Um, but I, I, I think that is a, a constructive way forward.
Okay, so, another question, please.
GDP 대비 4%로 경상수지를 억제하는 것은 자유경제주의 원칙에 어긋나는 게 아닐까요? 그리고 이것은 어떻게 보면 메이저리그의 브루스드의 제도랑 비슷한 것인데요. 메이저리그의 상위 수입이 많은 구단들이 돈을 따로 걷어가지고 돈이 수익이 없는 구단들한테 나눠져가지고 결국은 많은 투자를 한자가 결국은 이익을 얻지 못한다고 생각하는데 그러면 무인승 찾아 나타날 것 같고 많은 문제가 생길 것 같습니다.
Can you restate the question?
Is it really a cautious thing to do in market, uh, that, you know, setting the explicit goal of current account?
Setting explicit rules are, it's always gonna be problematic. And, and one reason is that, uh, again, as Chairman Greenspan mentioned this morning, uh, the, the current account deficit, the actual number or surplus, the actual number that you get, uh, is, uh, is the result of, uh, a vast system of buying and selling internationally. Uh, and then to just say, okay, I add up all these things, and all of a sudden, let me put a num, a number on it, and then, and then fixate on that number, that's always gonna be problematic. For example, the US current account deficit is, is, let's say it's currently 4.5%. There's a statistical discrepancy in the accounts that's at least 1% of GDP. Uh, if the US really wanted to say that their current account deficit was smaller, they can just allocate that whole statistical discrepancy to, uh, to exports, uh, and all of a sudden, their current account deficit is smaller. So there are ways of getting around these fixed numbers. Um, you brought up, should we be even thinking about it in a, in a market-driven, driven economy? I think the reason they're thinking about it is that sometimes, uh, people fall into the habit of, oh, it's a number, I can see it, and therefore it's easy to understand. Uh, and that's a, that's a bad habit to fall into when it's really the, the underlying forces at work that are driving these large imbalances, and that's, those things have to be, uh, assessed. If you, for example, If you, for example, if the US changed its tax code, that would impact the current account deficit. That would have, and we have pretty straightforward models that will show exactly how that could occur. And those are the sort of things that I'm advocating. That actually address the underlying issues, rather than this fixation on a percent of GDP for the current account.
Well, let's, to add to that, what Frank, in his presentation, mentioned about, you can play with the number, using the example of European countries, it's a big issue. For example, when those late comers joined the euro, they had to meet this condition about national debt, government budget deficit goal hurdle. And it turned out that they really sort of played with accounting, you know, rule to sort of really slide under the hurdle. And it became a big issue. And it turns out that, you know, Greece was not the only country that did that kind of trick. In terms of the market economic conflict, it'll be interesting. If you go to the Wall Street Journal webpage, they have a podcast, a short podcast that, in it, a commentator basically makes the same point about Treasury Secretary's attempt to, you know, not only sort of manage domestic economy, but international aspect of it. I saw it very recently, so it might be interesting to take a look. Okay, other questions?
So first of all, you're exactly right in highlighting the dance that there is between the US and China. With China holding 2.3 trillion dollars of US Treasury bonds, clearly, they're a major investor in the US government in that sense. And so, they have reason to be worried about their investments. Now, they made those investments not as a portfolio investor might, right? Not looking for the return on that particular investment, but they made those investments explicitly to spur employment growth, right? And so, you're right that the portfolio that they've accumulated is at risk, but they didn't accumulate that portfolio for investment returns. They accumulated that portfolio for employment gains, and therefore, stability. And so, yes, they're worried about it, but again, we go back and forth. Sometimes, we think about China as a Chinese government as investors, and forget that they have a much broader objective function that includes employment gains and things like that. On the international use of their currency, I don't think that the US can get in the way of that. If China, so let's put a thought experiment out there. For China to allow their currency to be used internationally more, they have to dismantle a lot of the capital controls that they currently have. And that's going to take some time. If they get rid of the capital controls, do we think that their currency is going to appreciate or depreciate? I'm not sure. I'm not sure of the answer. Everybody always seems to think that the Chinese currency is going to appreciate. But we don't know how much savings is locked up in China that wants to actually get out. And so, if their currency becomes more international, it could unleash just a flow of money, bottled-up money, leaving the country, and could actually put downward pressure on their currency. So I think it's a long way before, it's going to be a long time before there's more international use of the currency. And to do so, it has to encourage offshore markets in its currency. It has to allow its currency to be used internationally. It certainly, over the past year or so, has made steps in that direction, but these are pretty small steps, as one would expect. If they made more major steps, if we go back to Chongguo's earlier question, if they opened up their capital account, and then they tightened, like they just tightened recently, we'd expect money to flow in and upward pressure on their currency. Nowadays, they can get away with doing this because of the capital controls. If their currency becomes more international, they won't have that same flexibility. So I don't think the US can do anything to prevent the international use of China's currency. I'm not sure how quickly China wants this to actually occur. And if you think about it from the, I'll mention another area. So the euro, everybody thought that the euro was going to take over as, or challenge the dollar as the world's reserve currency. It's actually the case that, I don't think Germany, Germany's at the center of the euro area. I don't think Germany wants their currency to be international, be the world reserve currency. There are, you know, there are privileges that accrue to that. Whoever is the center of the world reserve, or whoever issues the world reserve currency. But there are costs as well. And so, countries, not every country would want to be at the center of the international financial system. There are benefits, but there are costs. And so, I'm not sure, one, I don't think the US can get in the way of China on this one, or would they want to. But two, I don't know how quickly China would want to allow for the international use of its currency.
I'm pretty much a free marketer myself, but I'm just playing devil's advocate to get your reaction. Lot of discussion is about countries with current account deficit or having problem with this exchange rate and so forth. Problem is a lack of domestic saving. Typical country is the US, just, you know, not enough saving, both by private sector as well as government. All right. So as, to provide an incentive to encourage a country to increase aggregate saving, how about like temporary measures like for, you know, other countries with extra money? Governments, public entities not buying the government bonds of the country with big deficit?
That's, so Chairman Greenspan mentioned that this morning, right? That one way to alleviate these problems is just to, to, let's say, forbid China from buying US bonds, right? That would be one practical implication of what you're mentioning. The problem is, if you, you know, if you set up a rule, when it comes to international finance, if you set up a rule, the investment banks, they are made to get around the rules. They will find a way around the rule. If China wants to buy US Treasury bonds, they will. It'll be through a shell company in the UK perhaps, but they will find a way. That's, this is what investment banks seem to thrive on, right? Set up, go ahead and set up a rule, and we will charge our clients a lot of money to get around the rule, whether the clients are the Chinese government or regular investors. So that would be tough. You'd have to ban, you'd have to ban all foreigners from buying the bonds, I think, to really implement that.
Recent Economist magazine had an article about suspicion along that line that Chinese money buying Japanese government bonds and in August, this basically dumped, and net position turned negative. But British, UK purchase of Japanese government bonds surged. And suspicion is that a vehicle went through there and bought Japanese government bonds, you know, anyway.
Yeah, I have a nice, not to make a plug for one of my own pieces, but the piece I issued through Council on Foreign Relations in September has a nice graph in it, if you can find it on the web easily enough. Has a nice graph on it, on a sharp decrease in China's holdings of US Treasury bills, really sharp decrease, and some people were getting excited about this. But if you plot that against the UK increase in holdings of Treasury bills, they're mirror images. And so, the unwinding of the Chinese position was exactly in line with a huge buildup, not actually in bills, but in bonds, so extend, going out the yield curve a bit more. People can always, people, governments can always get around investment rules. That's what it would come down to, it would come down to investment rules. Same thing with capital controls. Capital controls, you set them up, people can get around them as well. There's always going to be holes, and again, investment banks seem to thrive on getting around these things.
What an interesting world of global finance, I suppose. Okay, Chinese renminbi is on everybody's mind these days. But the world economy is in groggy condition like punched boxer now. So perhaps it's not right time to make long-lasting rules and rule changes. If you must, I suppose, temporary measures could be implemented so that when you recover, you could sort of remedy or rectify any shortcomings. All right, so we'll conclude this session now. And Professor Wanuk did a marvelous job of explaining, answering questions. So it looks like we'll have to have him back in, you know, a few years to hear him again. So please give him a warm hand, and we'll conclude the session. Thank you.